Christina, do you want me to admit all now?
Yes, and if you could make me host, I can do the co-hosting.
Christina, you should be host now.
Okay, admitting.
And I've admitted the members in. Karen, please start.
I'm ready.
You're good to go.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this special meeting of the Board of Directors, the purpose of which is to meet jointly with our new board committee, the IT Committee. It is Wednesday, January 5th, 2022. I want to wish everybody a very happy New Year, and I hope you all had pleasant holidays. Before we get to the regular agenda, I just wanted to make a couple of opening remarks. It's no secret that we, in 2019 and 2020, had some IT issues that was made public by a member and former board member, who was at the time a current board member, but and since that time, a lot has happened. We have lost our IT Director. We have formed this new board committee, the IT Committee, and we have requested, senior management has requested, a maturity assessment and which we'll be hearing about later this evening. We're aware that there were some materials that were made available to, only to the board and the IT Committee prior to this meeting. The reason for that is our Acting CEO Larry Butler and I felt that because of the sensitive nature of some of the material, that it would be best for the board and the IT Committee to have a chance to review those materials before it went broadly to the public. Obviously, this is an open meeting, so any member was, you know, able to join this meeting tonight, so. But it is, it has always been our intent to release all the materials after the meeting tonight. So I just wanted to say that. And I don't, Larry, did you have anything to add to that? I'll give you a chance now if you'd like to.
No, no, I think you said it well.
Okay, so with that, I would like a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Don't move.
Thank you, Director Dowling. Is there a second? Thank you, Director Mooney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And before we move on to member comments, I wanted to give you all a chance to meet this IT Committee. Hopefully, everybody is with us tonight, or hopefully will be soon. Jordan, are you there?
I am.
There you are. Jordan is the Chair of the IT Committee. Would you like to introduce your committee members?
Sure, so I'm the IT Committee Chair. The Vice Chair is Farnham Farhshani. Farnham, can you come on screen? I don't know if you can start your video. We also have members Kyle Chin, Ajayi, sorry, I don't see him on here. There he is. Ajayi Soravan Pudi. We have a board member, Aaron Webb, who advises our committee and is on the committee. And we also have Van Eyer, who I don't see on our list of members here. Did I leave anybody out?
I think that's it.
Okay.
And we also have, I know Said Khattari is from our our IT staff at Reston Association is on the calls. There he is, Mr. Reston Association. And I don't know if Zain is on the call or not, but.
Zain is, looks like it.
Thank you.
Okay, those are our two staff, our IT people. And a little bit later on, we will be meeting Michael Lockett and Joe Kraus from Whitley. Okay, next item on the agenda, member comments. Christina, did anyone sign up in advance for a member comment?
No, no signups, but if anybody would like to comment, please raise your.
Okay, I see Mr. Flashman has his hand up.
I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
And happy New Year to you all.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments that you made before turning the matter over to member comments. And I was particularly interested in the comment about the intention to release the documents concerning events which took place related to IT. However, an intention is one thing, and action is another. And so what I would like to know is whether you are, in fact, committing, as the resolution of the board was, to actually make available those documents following this meeting. Not that it is your intention, I understand that's your intention, but are you actually going to release those documents?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I look forward to reading them.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, any other member comments? Okay. Next item on the agenda is, was just for informational purposes, this has been available to the public, obviously, since it was put into effect in June, but the the Board Committee's resolution for, which, as of June, included the charter for the new IT Committee. So that was included in your packet, just for, for review purposes, if you hadn't seen it before. So are there any questions or comments about that? Okay, not seeing any, then.
Karen, this is Larry. You want to give Jordan an opportunity, maybe, you know, speak a little bit to that after, you know, the, the meeting that we, the sort of the inaugural meeting we had?
Sure.
If Jordan, do that.
Sure.
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. It's fine. Thank you.
Great. You're on, Jordan.
Okay, so at the inaugural meeting, we covered basically an IT department overview where we met the IT Committee staff, or sorry, the IT staff, Reston Association IT staff. We were introduced to Michael Lockett from Whitley as the virtual CIO. He provided an overview of his role and his activities, which included this IT maturity assessment that we're going to hear about tonight. And then we discussed the development of an annual work plan, and we decided that, while we do want to develop an annual work plan as soon as possible, we wanted to hear the current state of Reston Association IT, which we should hear during the IT maturity assessment, before we commit to what that work plan should look like. And that was basically what we covered. No official motions were made, and I don't believe we had any major comments by any members.
Okay, thank you, Jordan. Okay, if there's no other discussion on that agenda item, we'll move on to the next one, item E, which is the review of RA's IT Past, Present, and Future. And Michael, Michael Lockett, who is our virtual CIO, and Joe Kraus from Whitley are here, so I will turn it over to one or both of them.
Good evening, Board and Committee. I'm Michael Lockett from Whitley and LLP. I joined the Reston Association as the virtual CIO back in November of 2021. Part of my engagement during that time was to jointly work on the IT maturity assessment with a focus specifically around your managed service provider, Red River. Working with your internal team, Said and Zain, we made some operational improvements to the way that Red River provides services to the organization of Reston Association. Looked at their daily operational tasks and services, and then made sure that all the things that were contracted met those items that were to be delivered to the organization. Going forward, my role will actively take the IT maturity assessment and working with the IT Committee to prioritize the needs of Reston Association to continuously digitally transform, transform the organization and improve those items of concern around security, around governance, and a few others that will be highlighted in the IT maturity assessment. So my day-to-day roles will be a partner to the organization, providing strategic advice to the senior leadership, developing project task and proposal requests and approval of projects, working with Reston Associations on baselines for communications and user community in advance of changes, communicating those changes effectively to the organization. I will mentor, coach, and provide IT oversight to the internal staff of the IT team members of Zain and Said, and additionally, work to manage and support all the services provided to you through Red River and your third-party service providers. Part of our discovery in the IT maturity will point to kind of a really defined roadmap of what items could be taken up by the IT Committee and put, put defined priorities on to give you the goals and reach the level of IT maturity that Reston Association has made an investment to move towards. So with that, you had some challenges in the past. I think mainly you were working on stabilization of your infrastructure, modernization of your technology, security approaches, then migrating some of your services to the, to the cloud or SaaS as a software as a service. Also augmented some of the IT skills gaps in your professional team, which we've done some of that over the last six months, but over the last year as well. One of the major things that was accomplished in the 2021 calendar year for the organization was the network was refreshed, including your wireless environment, the servers, the storage systems, some of your core applications, including emails, also shifted out to the third party, and we've seen tremendous improvements in those service deliveries. The future is really defined in your IT maturity assessment, which we'll talk in great detail here in just a few minutes with my peer, Joe Kraus. With that, that is the quick update of my role and the overview of kind of where you are to where we're going.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Does anybody have any, any questions for for Mr. Lockett? All right, so are we ready to move on to item F, then, the IT maturity assessment?
Karen, I don't have, I don't have a question for Michael, but this topic covers past, past IT stuff, and so it's not really related to Michael, but I think it's related to the agenda item. We were sent a sample statement regarding our past IT instance, and without objection, I'd like to direct staff to release that to the members, unless other board members have comments that they have yet to make on the statement. I sent two small tweaks that I asked if Larry could work with our vendor to see if they're okay with those. But without objection, I'd like to see the statement released to the membership before our next board meeting.
Yeah, as, as I said, I think that was, that was what we had planned to do, so that, that will be done. And I didn't, I didn't see, Jennifer, I didn't see any responses to your suggested tweaks, so are we, are we all okay with releasing what we've already seen the way it is? From Director Mooney.
Karen, this is Larry. I'm happy to work with our, our vendor on that with respect to Jennifer's consent. But I thought it would break for the full board to to have that in front of them.
Okay, so you'll be, you will do that then, and then send us something final version to look at before it's, it's released. Is that what will happen?
Yeah, it can be, probably be done tomorrow.
Okay.
And Larry, you don't see any reason that we can't get it out before the board meeting?
None whatsoever.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody good with that? All right, another thumbs up from. All right, then, on to the maturity assessment. And that will be, will that be, Michael, will that be you or Joe? And I assume it's going to be, is it going to be brought up on the screen or?
Yeah, unmuted.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. I would like to request if we can bring that up on the screen.
Yep. Christina or somebody, can you make that happen? Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Christina. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Kraus, and I'm a CIO advisor for Whitley. And my role on this was primarily to lead the overall assessment based on the goals and objectives that were laid out. So if you can go to the first page, please. Thank you, Christina. So, so it came down to what was the purpose and objective of this assessment? And it's really to look at the organization from a holistic point of view, to look at its current use of technology and how that could be used and leveraged to make it easier primarily for the members and other constituents who do business with Reston Association. And there was a lot of findings in the report that are detailed that point to barriers that get in the way of how the members really can be virtual and online with Reston Association. And secondly, how can the members at the Reston staff themselves use technology to work more efficiently and more effectively, so that they can provide more time, their time, to provide services to the membership? Thirdly, and these are not in order of importance, they're all of equal importance. How can we better protect our member information? This is vital to every organization. And as Michael had mentioned, there was a lot of steps that have been taken to do that in the past year. We've identified some additional steps that we feel are necessary as part of this assessment. And finally, how can we use technology to improve opportunities for revenue growth of the non-asset lines of business? You know, your, your aquatics business lines, the parks, recreation, and so on. So those are kind of the key factors that we had in mind as we were doing this assessment. Christina, if you can go to the next page. The one now. So let me just talk a little bit about what the assessment was. When we go in, in our methodology and perform an assessment, we start by, with what is called a discovery phase. And discovery really consists of two primary components, interviews and documentation review. So the individuals identified here are the folks that Michael and I talked to during the course of the assessment. These interviews were roughly one-hour interviews where we had questions based on their particular role, got their responses to those questions, and then from that, we produce findings. In addition, we reviewed available documentation. There's quite a bit of documents that we reviewed. We looked through those and also drew some assessment from the, from the documentation itself. And the assessment that we performed was performed by Michael and I, and Michael and I are two former CIO practitioners who have run IT organizations of medium, small, and large organizations. So it's a combination of our experience, what we found during our interviews, and the material that, that we reviewed. So that was the basis of the assessment. And before we move on, I talked to a lot of people, Michael talked to a lot of people, and I think one of the things that's important to note is that through every single interview that I conducted, that Michael conducted, the level of participation and collaboration and information sharing from the folks that I talked to was very high. And that, to me, is an indication of a healthy organization, at least from the perspective of professionalism, high collaboration, and people who really care about the organization. I've done assessments in the past where that has not been the case. So I think, I wanted to point that out because it goes to, I think, the general quality of the staff. And while that's not a finding in the assessment, I think it's important to point out. So let me just talk a little bit also about the assessment. While we're doing this, when we're producing our findings, we're doing a broader assessment of an organization, as it pertains to really four key dimensions. The organization and the people, the information and the technology, the partners and suppliers, the primary one here being Red River, and finally, the value streams and processes. So we are not opening up an application and trying to determine how is this application designed? What are the security controls that are in place on that particular application? This is really trying to get a perspective of what an organization's maturity level is and how well they're leveraging technology to advance the mission and the goals of the organization while protecting the information that the organization uses to conduct its daily business. So that's kind of what this assessment was about. And I'm sure we'll have some questions afterward, but if you can go to the next page, Christina, I appreciate it. So based on the goals that I mentioned in the second page, we developed some key technology strategic objectives that we think that are important, but they're built around the need to, I think significantly enhance cross-departmental collaboration and transparency. One of the things that we found, and this is not unusual in, in many organizations, are what we call islands of information. Areas where applications are built for a particular intent and purpose, serve that purpose well, but come short of really being able to provide decisional information to provide ease of access because an individual wants to traverse an organization to be able to glean information, if it's a member, about all the activities that I work on or that I participate in, or, or what my assessment portfolio looks like, and so on. So we found a lot of that information was there. It was at times difficult to get to because of the backend applications lack the integration. Part and parcel to that, lack of integration, is the governance that sits on top of that at the departmental level. How well does one department be, you know, work with the other department? It's not that they don't work well together, it's they have a very focused mission, they're trying to achieve that mission well. And so there's some things that can be done to improve how well that works. But the goals that we laid out here is really to give a member a single-user experience in receiving services, so the time they're on and back out is minimized and relevant to what they need to be online for. And this is mainly through their iPhones, their computer, however they meet virtually, and not having to go into multiple locations using multiple passports. One, one access they're in, they have access to the things that are relevant to them, and only those things that, that they have a need to know. The Reston staff and business partners need to have a universal view of the community. So it turns out that Reston serves a lot of communities, not just members, but there's partners. There are, you know, renters who are also members, but there's a wide range that we found of constituents. But it's difficult to get information about, you know, somebody who is paying their, their assessment and what events have they participated in, in a single, universal view. It's kind of spread around in different locations. Part and parcel to that is enhancing the protection of constituent information by consolidating the pathways. What this means is because there's so many different ways to get in there, it makes it difficult architecturally to control access to the information that people need to have about themselves, and there needs to be better controls in the design and the architecture of the applications, so that they have access to what they need to and are isolated from things for which they don't need access. And the last thing is growing revenues by opening channels that are easy to engage, measurable, and accessible. The measurability goes to your data quality. How, how many events are people participating in? What kind of revenue are we getting for that? And we found that it was difficult to answer those kinds of questions, in part due to the island nature of the data, but, but also because it wasn't well-integrated on the backend. So while the, to our assessment, that while the association have had security challenges in the past, there are steps that need to be taken to improve that, but they have come a long way from where they are. And if I could have the, the next slide. So this is our top-level assessment, and when you look at this, there's a number of different colors here. The key recommendations behind each of these different chevrons or areas, there's numerous findings and recommendations, and with those recommendations, there are roadmaps that go along with each of these. But the six areas were one constituent-facing services. So those are the services that somebody who is a member particularly uses to engage with Reston in a virtual sense. One of the key recommendations is you need a universal or 360-degree view of your relationship with the association that really brings us together in the business. It's called a constituent relationship management capability. And it really goes to the heart of how you're managing that relationship with your constituents, their interactions, knowing what kind of interactions they're having with you, what kind of interactions you had with them. And then on top of that, the website that is currently deployed is technically extremely limited in its capability. It's more like a billboard than an interactive portal. And so the combination of the two, which is the enhanced backend that provides both the staff and to the members themselves, a way to see their information across all the different services that Reston Association offers, and it's easy to get to and provides a consistent experience. So the rating on that is yellow. We, if you look at the legend at the right, we rate these key areas from red, yellow, green, blue, to white. Without going into a lot of detail, most organizations we evaluate are largely red, yellow, are largely red, yellow and sun green. I I can say that we rarely will evaluate an organization that is blue because most of those organizations that are in that state of maturity generally are not doing a maturity assessment. They're doing something to enhance their level of service built on what they already have. So I don't want to have you take the impression that, oh, we got four yellows and two greens. That's a bad report card. It is not that bad in my experience. But that that's kind of the the picture. So going around to the right, governance and benchmarking. In order to be successful on the left with the constituent constituent facing services, the organization really needs to implement appropriate governance over the IT portfolio. And this is governance at the senior leadership team level and at the IT committee level, and then finally at the board level to ensure we know what that roadmap looks like. We know what the priorities are. We know what that means from a service delivery point of view, from a financial point of view, and we have visibility into that. So as we did the assessment, we found that was lacking. Most of what we found was enhancements in cybersecurity, which was a big focus necessarily in this past year. But it didn't go more broadly to hold to the whole mission delivery of of the Reston Association to its members and constituents. So those things taken together are are critical. You can't do the constituent constituent facing services and achieve the level of maturity without having the governance and then the associated benchmarking that's associated with how are we doing? Going around to the right, I'm going to go to the greens last, but on cybersecurity, the overall assessment was that from an infrastructure and a network topology point of view, a lot of improvements have been made. The things that caused the problems had been largely resolved. But one of the things that we found needs to be added on top of what was already built was improved monitoring and insight into what security events are going on in the network. So we are recommending using a risk-based approach to implement additional security operations, monitoring and oversight to provide both the managed service provider and the Reston IT staff better visibility into events that may be occurring. Because regardless of how tight your perimeter is, the the big threat around cybersecurity is largely at the endpoints. And if you don't have eyes on what's going on sufficiently, there could be nefarious things happening without you even knowing about it. And so that, by the way, is probably a natural growth based on what you already built, which is built, get the infrastructure solid and in place. And now you have put eyes on it. You have to see what's going on. The other area of perspective on IT, this was really, I had a couple of questions. Well, we only have two IT staff. Do we have the right level of staff? Are they providing a good service to the organization? The universal view was, yes, they are. They're working very hard. In fact, they felt that they were overworked. But what we're saying in our assessment is before you start going off and hiring additional IT staff, you need to better leverage your managed service provider and really integrate the onsite IT staff with the managed service provider. And then see if you can optimize that before you go off and start spending money just on doing more of the same, but inefficiently. So we found the IT staff themselves were very willing and on board. In fact, while Michael was doing his CEO advisory work, they had already taken a number of proactive steps in conjunction with Red River. And I think with some additional guidance and help and oversight, that can be brought further further along. And we feel that of those yellow chevrons, if you will, the lower right hand corner is probably the one that will get to green soonest. Based on our recommendations and our roadmap, probably cybersecurity next. And the two long poles in the tent are your constituent facing services in conjunction with your IT governance and benchmarking. The other two areas we looked at is the current state of the M three sixty five deployment. We found that Red River was doing a decent job of managing M three sixty five, but that there's a lot of capability, in particular around internal collaboration. There is no intranet. SharePoint and Teams are not being sufficiently leveraged to really have the kind of impact for online collaboration internal and also externally with things like document sharing and and really taking advantage of that whole Microsoft stack that you deployed. So normal routine things like Office and other applications, email, those are those are fine, but it's some of the higher end capabilities between SharePoint, OneDrive and Teams that can be better leveraged to build a company-wide internet to improve internal employee communications and to really move that organization in a direction that really enhances that transparency and information sharing. And then finally, we spent a good number of discussions mostly with Michael on working with the managed service provider. And at the time when we came onboard, the contract was about to expire at the 31st of December. So the first thing we wanted to know is should should it be renewed? We found Red River to be competent, very capable. Perhaps not sufficiently leveraged as they should be, again, owing to getting the IT staff onsite better involved on daily operations. But that they clearly had capabilities. The platform on which they operate and provide the services, which is ServiceNow, is used across the across many organizations, a very powerful tool. And there are some things that can be done to improve and enhance that. We talked to him about that. They already made suggestions, said, oh, yeah, we can do that. So we think we can make improvements and and work with them and how they support Reston and get them to a more managed state, if you will. And that's probably along with the perspective on IT to the easier lifts. The M three sixty five deployment is like cybersecurity. Those are medium lifts, whereas the two on the top are going to be the biggest lifts. And the two on the top, in particular, the top left is most likely going to require some investment on the part of the organization in order to make that happen. So those are the kind of the key points. And we have in the detail that you'll be getting subsequent to this meeting, many of the findings, recommendations and the specific roadmaps for each of these areas that we recommended. And we would fully, you know, highly recommend those, that roadmap be taken in conjunction with the IT committee to produce a 2022, 2023 plan, something that looks out over the next two years and say, here's what we can accomplish, that that be transparent, both to the committee as well as to the staff and the senior leadership team, that there be consensus view on that overall roadmap. I think it's it's a lift. The the one thing I will say, it derives from tone of the top. I think the tone of the top has been very good throughout all of this. And it's just getting, you know, driving behavioral change, driving an allocation of time that every weekend I'm going to spend a certain amount of hours working with my colleagues through through governance, setting up things like project portfolio management to allow this cross-functional governance team to to act and to make decisions based on a portfolio-based approach. But but, you know, that that's really the bottom line is there's different levels of improvement that can be made across the organization over time and better integration can can really also drive efficiencies in the organization, not only on daily execution, but in delivery to the members and the members enhancement in their time they spend trying to get something from Reston Association that they need and not spending, you know, hours coming in to the office or talking on the phone. They should be able to go online and largely get what they want in in much more of a self-service type of fashion and and much more of a kind of push to them or rather than a pull, let me go try to find this type of thing. So that's kind of the broad level overview. And I will stop there and turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
You're welcome.
I'm unmuted now. Okay. All right. Well, if that, I think I will open open the floor up to any comments or questions that folks might have of Mr. Lockett or Mr. Kraus. Yes, yes, Director Patrino.
Yes, I I think page five or slide five has an enormous amount of information on it, and particularly as it was supplemented by Joe gives a very encouraging view of IT at 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 RA. With, you know, I had a, I was going to ask a number of questions, which you're you're very professional, Joe, you anticipated my my questions and answered them already. So thank you very much. I was going to ask, you know, kind of a prioritization of the of the of the various elements here, and you answered those very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Director Dowling.
Joe, I just wanted to say thank you for your great work. And also that I very much appreciated the positive comments you made about RA staff, their professionalism and their commitment. Great to hear. We know how valuable they are, and it's great to get independent confirmation of that. So thank you.
You're welcome. I I enjoyed interviewing them. I really did.
Yes, Arnhem.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well. A great presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. Kraus. The only thing I wanted to mention is that if we can, if the committee, IT committee can get access to the detailed that would be great. And these, the presentation is amazing, but this is not much that we can work with. If we can get the full details and all the all, I'm assuming there is a full set, a full report, right?
Larry, do you want to take that?
Yeah. So if you could get access to that, the the committee, can I get access to that? That would be great. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, we we do have a version. Probably another 16 pages. They're PowerPoint slides. I do not have in detail individual transcripts of interviews. I've found in the past that that can be a slippery slope. Through the interview process, I I I build trust. I, you know, tell tell folks that, you know, kind of what you say here will be not attributable to any individual. And I just, out of respect to their privacy, I'd like to offer the the version that we have with greater detail. And then if something beyond that is necessary, then then we can discuss it with Larry and we can see what we can provide. I'm just, you know, I have to be sort of careful on these assessments as to, you know, what goes, what what goes out. But there is quite a bit more detail that's in the full report.
Also. Perfect. Thank you.
And and some of the background materials that were shared with Joe and Michael and Whitley in the conduct of this, some of those are things that have already been out there and they just haven't been aggregated. And so we're we're happy to aggregate those. Those are some of the reports for former IT directors as well, as well as a proposed roadmap that she had put together. So there there's some really valuable information that we can get you.
That's perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Any anybody else? Jordan?
Karen, I'd just like to recognize that there is a question or a comment in chat. If you want to open it up to the general constituency.
Yeah, I just, there was a member who had some comments and I just asked him to put them in chat. But I haven't seen it yet. Is somebody else seeing something that I'm not seeing?
I see a note from Rick. It says, I have a couple of comments and questions. I don't know if that.
Right. And and I responded to him that he should put them in chat, but I haven't seen anything yet. So hopefully. Oh, too long to type. Well, the, yeah, this, this is this is not a a public hearing. So I, Rick, just just send us, send an email your comments to us then, if you wouldn't mind.
Could we spare three minutes?
We'll respond to you subsequently. Yep. Sarah, I'm sorry, Sarah. What did you say? I didn't hear you.
I just said we can spare three minutes if he wants to make a comment, but that's your call.
His comment was not a single word about process. Does somebody want to respond to that?
But process, I'm assuming he's talking about business process and not method methodology as it pertains to the assessment itself. So is that correct?
Hopefully we'll get a response.
In anticipation of the former being the answer.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so so end to end process. In the in the world that I come from, it's it's called business process mapping. But there is is absolutely essential that as part of building constituent relationship platform and the website, that those end-to-end processes be well defined. In a in a way that was akin to the new financial system that was just put in. In order to go from procure to pay, you have to have your financial processes well defined end to end. When it comes to providing services to constituents, there is a dearth of end-to-end processes. That's part of the problem. And and I, sorry, I did not mention that. It it's so obvious. It's like, yeah, you should, because it's core to it. There's the, you know, the the end-to-end processes is what really will drive the value proposition in a CRM deployment, taking the various personas that you're working with and how they interact across the, if you will, the life cycle of that transaction or that experience that they have. But yeah, thanks for bringing that up. But process mapping as part of the CRM deployment is absolutely. But yeah, thanks for bringing that up, but process mapping as part of the CRM deployment is absolutely essential. And I apologize for not making that clearer in the report.
If I could just add on to that, Karen or Joe, you know, as as Joe pointed out. You know, we have, you know, several applications that. Don't have a single sign-on, are not integrated with the background data. And so one of the key elements that that, you know, Joe, Michael and I and Tom and others have discussed is. You know, mapping each one of those, where do they intersect? What are the common elements among them? You know. Key to that is a property address. You know, virtually everybody has a property address, but you know, one, you know, one of our applications goes by the owner. Another one doesn't care who the owner is necessarily, because if they're a tenant. You know, they can still interact and, you know, get pool passes or whatever. So it's it's the intersection of those various applications. That is really, really key to that. And so we have to map each one of those processes to see where those, where they, where they touch one another.
Thank you. Director Justa, you had your hand up.
Thanks. I just have a a few questions. When when you guys were, I saw you that you looked at over seventy-five documents. I was wondering, were part of those documents, did you, were you able to see like our network infrastructure? Were you able to see a full list of the applications that that the association uses and what they use them for?
Yes.
Okay. And then how did you guys assess the member experience? Because you're recommending a CRM, but I'm trying to get a little bit more understanding of why you're recommending a CRM. Because, you know, a CRM can be this, or a CRM can be this. Now, I have a hundred-page report from my own company. You know, making the judgment call of of whether we need a CRM and what kind of CRM we might need. But I'm I'm not getting, I guess, enough information to help me figure out why you guys are recommending a CRM. And the members weren't part of. You know, the people that were interviewed. So how are you getting from? You know, that we don't have one, but we do need one.
I'll try. The the. Let's let's take a typical member. They 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 will have. They will go to the park and engage with some recreational program, or there'll be a volunteer. Or they'll have to vote on a particular. Election or a referendum or whatever that is. And in each of those three cases. That was a different experience and the data on the back end was isolated to that particular function. So just running a board election turns out to be a fairly significant amount of work. Because that information. You know, is not in one place. And it's it's sometimes out to out of date. And so there's a general data hygiene problem. And in organizations that I've been in the past. This type of solution where you have multiple touchpoints for a member with multiple engagement types across an organization. Is typically a a CRM. Type of a a problem and there's. A whole bunch of different ways about going about how to do that, but the first one, the first step you have to do is. To look at where all those information stores are. And I found at least, you know. Five or six information stores plus multiple spreadsheets. And when you have that type of situation, you know, a typical organization. That that wants better analytics around this information needs to consolidate those. That constituent information. So that's the first one is the constituent information is is spread out in different places. The second one is inter interactions. So is my information correct as one, but what kind of interactions do I have with you? In conducting the business of what I need to conduct the business with as a member. And none of those interactions are being recorded. The Member Services Group does not have a ticketing system that they can use. They have snapshots of their call detail records of phone calls that are made, but you don't have interaction information. So the the CRM framework is really built upon having a coherent. Store of information about your constituents and their interactions and then providing a secure way to come into that. Environment. And you know, that's not a financial system. That's not a case management system. It's not a supply chain system. That's a classic constituent relationship or customer relationship management. Problem that I've seen in a number of organizations. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, I think it helps. I'm just trying, you know, we're a nonprofit association, so you typically see more of a membership system. As your central record-keeping system. So that's why I'm trying to get an understanding. Is it a membership system? Do we have like a central record-keeping issue? Or is it really a CRM, which, you know, you might have that demographic data in, but then it connects to all of your other systems? So that's what I'm I'm trying to.
So so we had this discussion. It's interesting that you raised that point because. Actually, Reston looks more like a municipal government. Than than a member association, like most of the member application, membership application environments look like. Because you provide services, you know, there's a lot of facility services that go on. There's. You know, and and at the end of the day, more work needs to be done. You know, we're we're recommending an integrated approach. But one of the things that my colleague Michael has experienced with a platform that Mike Leon pointed out called Civic Plus. And Civic Plus was purpose-built for municipalities. To to help deliver services to the constituent communities. And, you know, so so that's why I said those two tiers at the top are the hardest problems that you have involved. Because in a way, you're like a membership community, but in a way, you're like a municipal government. You're not as much like a fundraising organizations like most nonprofits that I have experienced with. So you're a hybrid. And that's why this problem, if this problem were easy, would have been solved, you know, a long time ago. This is a difficult problem. And it requires, that's why the the governance and the cross-functionality of the team looking at this from those different perspectives, including the members. Love to get the members involved, right, in in the discovery of getting their needs, doing a needs analysis on the members. That should be part of that. So. Yeah, I mean, I use CRM in a kind of a broad sense.
Okay.
Because.
But we do need to kind of delve down, maybe use our.
Well, absolutely.
Document our processes, maybe. I mean, would you recommend getting a consultant to kind of help us with? With really determining the scope and scale of a engagement like that?
I I I think, you know, in cases I've seen before, you know, absolutely. You know, within your organization, you have your key. Subject matter experts. You know, people that run your programs, people that run, you know, on the finance side. Getting somebody to facilitate a platform selection, discovery, process engineering. Data mapping exercises. I don't think those are competencies that the organization has because your mission is not in that space. So I, that's why I said this probably will require some additional investment. On the part of the organization because of the complex nature of of the problem. And and one last thing I'll say is you have some applications like Members Suite. And RecTrack that are pretty good in the space they operate in. Well, can you leverage those? Do you have to take tear them out and start over? You know, it's really painful to do that. So this is, these are, these are challenging. Problems. And if there is a cohesive team approach to it, that's the only way I've ever seen these problems solved successfully.
Thank you. And then the other big one that you talked about was the IT governance piece. And I think that. You know, that's that's probably, like you said, another area that's a big lift for us, but like. Where does the responsibility between kind of our our IT staff? Our our service provider with Red River and our other internal teams, like where does the responsibility of those. You know, recommendations or the person that's the go-between, you know, those areas, where does that lie? Or where where do you guys recommend? Where where should it be?
Well, you you have, you you start out with the fact that you need a governance team. You need a portfolio and then you need leadership. I've seen it in organizations where that was the COO. Because it's when people say, oh, this is an IT problem, we we all work in IT, right? This is a business problem. It's not an IT problem. So I am of the opinion, and others can vary, if people say, oh, it should be the CIO. Well, that just perpetuates the myth that the CIO is the problem. It's a business problem. And in an organization where you have a COO. Leading this type of thing, including the portfolio. Is, I think. Better. The the CEO is always way too busy for what this requires. So so I I think, yes, IT has a seat at the table. Marketing and membership have a seat at the table. Programs has a seat at the table. The picking the right leader at the end of the day. It really doesn't matter as much as what that person can do and bring to the organization. So it's it's some tough decisions and and I think the the steering committee can really help, you know, in this regard. To try to look at what is the governance model that we want to have in our organization that can best meet your needs, because. This is not a full-time job. You know, everybody else has already their full-time jobs. And and so, yeah, maybe augmenting it with some external resource. But but I will say directly, there's got to be senior leadership team participation and. And membership and and ownership and also leadership. So there, again, I'm being a little obtuse, but. You know, I I think it, I I just don't want to leave the the board and the committee with the impression that this is an IT problem.
Right. Great. No, that's perfect. Thank you so much. Those were my questions. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Hamilton has posted some more comments. If anyone would like to respond, can you all see that? Process evaluation and improvement should drive technology acquisition. If processes aren't written and or never evaluated evaluated. Technology won't solve the problem.
I absolutely agree.
Yes, Mr. Lockett, did you want to say something? You're on.
No, no, I I I can, I was supporting the.
Okay, you just made a noise and you lit up. Okay. Yes, Director. You had your hand up?
Oh, and. I'll keep it very short. I think that Larry has hit on the idea of process mapping. If you don't know what your processes are, as Rick Hamilton has pointed out. Techno, just buying a little I IT packages. May solve an immediate problem, may but may create additional problems in the future. It all has to work together and I think. Joe and Mike have identified the key key elements. Which are really difficult because they do take time. And. Because we are a mature organization, we're kind of. Doing things, if you were, if you were in a startup mode, these are things that you would kind of have thought about already. We're going from a manual manual processes into automated processes after only fifty years. And that's, that's a challenge, but it has to be done. It will make the organization much more effective. But just buying another software packages is just a waste of money at this point. Unless you know how it's gonna, how it's gonna integrate into everything else that you do. And I completely agree with Joe that IT often gets, very often gets blamed for problems that are business problems.
Karen, this is Larry. If I can make a comment.
Yes.
One of the, you go through the process. That that Joe primarily and Michael assisted with for the assessment. One of the, one of the eye-openers for me. You know, obviously, having worked here a long time and been through many different software application iterations and things like that. Was just in the way they discuss, you know, sort of, I I'm not gonna use the word silos, Michael or Joe, you used a different word, which is better, but. You know, he referenced, you know, Members Suite and RecTrack and, you know, Smartwebs and things like that 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 we utilize. And, you know, they were deployed for, you know, a fairly specific reason, but there wasn't. You know, that sort of consistent, you know, where do they overlap and and how do, how can we and do they? Integrate with one another. And so I think the the real challenge that we have, and and, you know, Rick Hamilton has pointed it out in in. His comments to some degree is, you know, the business processes, there there is overlap in everything we do and there, you know, as I said earlier, the common element. Is, you know, based upon, for for most of the applications, is based on ownership of a lot or a or a unit. And so I think I think it's absolutely correct that we have to map those processes. And it's going to be a substantial undertaking. And, you know, I think, you know, however, the board. And the IT committee, you know, believe is the correct way to move forward with that. I just wanna, you know, I I would alert. The board that at some point, whether it's, you know, twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, not this year, this year's budget is set. It's going to require some investment. So I I think you probably all have that in the back of your minds already. But it's, I'm just gonna, you know, put it out there that it will require some investment just to get to the point of. You know, what is it specifically that we need and what will best meet our needs, not only for the membership, but for the staff interacting with the membership.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, I, I think this has been really, really productive and helpful. To meet with. Mr. Lockett, Mr. Kraus and the IT committee and our IT staff. And much of our senior leadership team is on this call tonight, so. I think this was very worthwhile and. Hopefully it will be helpful for the IT committee going forward as well. Yes.
Karen, just really quick, because we we have all of our brain power and staff here. You know, they went through this experience with our consultants, so just. You know, Larry was sharing some of his thoughts. I just wanted to see if we could open it up to other staff. If there's anything that they learned through this experience or, you know, things that they, you know, would like to share with the board. That's important to them. I just want to make sure they know that we're we're open to hearing their thoughts and and feedback, too.
Thank you. Thank you. That's, that's a good point and I was thinking about doing that without without. With apologies for putting you on the spot, but Said and Zane, if if. There's anything you would like to say. Who knows when you'll get this opportunity again?
Well, yeah, I just want to comment on on. The presentation and the reports that that Joe and and Michael did. So. I I'll try to put it kind of in in a, in a way that would make sense maybe to everyone. So since I have been working with Reston Association, I think it's since two thousand eighteen, early two thousand eighteen. We were doing like the work from here and there and there. So all kind of the IT activities. So all kind of the IT activities was, I think, was kind of not aligned to a. Base goal and the top goal, right? We are starting from here, then you are going to there. But. Since I've interviewed with Michael and with Joe and we talked about it, they all know and they both know actually that. And, and that was my concern today. So now I see the same thing in the reports as well. That, that makes me feel like, okay, we are, we are in the right direction, at, at least to my point of view. That now we are. Able to identify the big problems. And now we will work towards how to kind of resolve those. Let's just start from the small one and get to the bigger ones. And I didn't like that. And just that comment. And, and I'm so happy that, that. Kind of. I have a team or we have a team with Larry and Tom. And Joe and Michael that now I can speak up and share my concerns with them. And then I also get what they think, what they want, so that we kind of, you know, have like one path. Since, since I work, I always, I'm since I have been with RA, I always work at the backend at the service side of it. I was kind of giving the task to what to do. So now I can speak, discuss and then see. Which helped me feel kind of nice and better. So yeah, I think we are in the right path. And I appreciate Larry's effort on that as well, that he kind of, he was the one, I, I, I think, was it like December sometime, Larry, that you called me and he was like asking me, what do you think about this? I said, oh, it's, it's, I think it's a great idea. Let's just move towards this as a spin. I did see what happens. It was early, early November. Yeah, sometime I remember. So yeah, I mean, thank you. Thank you. I'm really happy now. I think we are heading towards the right direction now. Is that?
Yeah, and I totally agree with Said. I'm Zane, by the way. And I just wanted to point out one thing that Joe said on his report earlier. It's honestly been a pleasure to work with the RA staff here. Everyone is honestly so nice to work with and they're always collaborative. So it's, it's been nice working here and being responsible for all the things that go on in IT.
Great. Thank you both. Thank you both. I also wanted to, without putting you on the spot, Mike Leoni, is there, because you are. You know. Our member services guy, among many other things, communications and have been involved in, in our needs for website improvements to. Improve member interaction online. If there's anything you wanted to say?
No, I, I just wanted to say I did have a really good, long conversation with Joe. You know, filling him in on the process we had gone through with the website. Some of the, the member input focus group sessions we had with our members. How we went through the RFP process and then ultimately. How we got to the decision as a staff that we had made. And I know Joe listened and took a lot of that information in. And I think, you know, as Joe had mentioned, you know, he met with a lot of our senior leadership colleagues. And, you know, I think what he heard from me, he probably heard. Consistently from some of, some of our other SLT members. And on the member services side, I know Joe spent time with Maurice Gara, our member services manager, as well as myself. On, you know, some of the challenges we have today. You know, he mentioned the CRM system, you know, on the member services side, one of the biggest challenges we have. Is that we, and you know, what do you use the term CRM or whatever you use for a customer relationship database? We have no way in member services to log member notes. So if a member of the customer, the member services team talks to a member today about a particular issue. There really is no system in place. To maintain log notes on those conversations. And I think most of you know, when you have a, a conversation with. Probably any organization that you deal with, your credit card company or bank, whatever. Typically, when they wrap up, or I come from the broadband and cable industry. Any conversation you have with a member, you can jot down some notes about what that conversation was about. So that if there's a follow-on conversation. You can refer back and see what that conversation was between the representative of the organization and the customer. We don't have, we don't have an electronic system for doing that today. And fortunately, our staff is small, so it makes it a little bit easier to talk to one another. But ideally, it would be great to be able to archive. Interactions. It would also be nice from a, and this is where kind of the marketing side. Of communications comes in with our members, you know, even be able to have information about likes. You know, are there, you know. Do we have members that buy tennis passes? And we can pull some of that from the RecTrack database. But we have no way to sort of cross. The data. So we could look at being maybe more surgical in our marketing strategies. You know, what, what are, somebody like Jennifer who has young children. You know, it would be nice to be able to know roughly what are those age categories? So that if we had a program or activity that we were, that we were planning. To do within RA. Be able to push information to her about that program that might be targeted to her children's age group. We don't have that kind of ma- marketing data. And those are the things that CRMs give organizations, the power of that data. To be able to be much more surgical and effective in marketing and promoting programs. So I know Joe listened to us. It was, it was a great conversation. And I'm looking forward to seeing where this goes from here.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Anybody, anything else anybody else would want to say before we adjourn?
I, I do have something, Karen. So.
Yes, for.
The, I just did want to say, you know, thank you, Joe and Michael for the time you spent interviewing all of our. Staff and, and going through all the documents. I know that's no, no small task. And, you know, obviously you did spend a lot of time synthesizing the information and coming up with some good recommendations. And, and obviously we're, we're going to reach out, the IT committee is going to reach out to Larry and, and try to get a, a better idea of the IT landscape with the information that we can. Get the historical information that we can get. And Larry, you'll see a kind of written request for that. I did want to thank. Zane and Said. I mean, the, the fact that we have any greens on the, on the IT maturity assessment is probably a testament to how hard you guys are working. So. You know, great job once again, guys. And, you know, I guess happy new year to you. For, for getting a good, good report. So thanks again, everybody.
Thank you. And, and we'll look forward to seeing down the road your, the IT committee's work plan.
We're looking forward to writing it.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I, I want to thank you all. Again, I think this was, this was very informative, very productive and helpful and, and. Looking forward to, to the road ahead. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Director Moody's hand went up and I saw Director Dowling with a second I'll take. Okay, all those in favor? Hey, anybody opposed to adjourning? All right. Thank you all and have a good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Night.
Good night.